Okay, 7:07, we call the meeting to order. Ms. Lambert, would you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. We have draft minutes for April 13th and April 27th. Are there any corrections to the minutes for those two meetings? If there are no corrections, we'll accept the minutes as drafted by the secretary. Superintendent's report, we have a couple of recognitions?
Yes, Mr. Vice President. The first recognition is the CAC Leadership Students, and we have two students to be recognized. This is a very prestigious award. Oh, put your microphone. We have two students from our high school that received the CAC Leadership Award. This is a very prestigious award in the state of Connecticut. These students that are recognized have tremendous leadership skills and ability. It goes through a panel and they are selected. So we have two. We have Talia Rivera, and we have George Medina. George is not here today, but Talia is here with her parents here today. So Talia. I have a certificate for Talia. And also, if you don't mind, Mr. Vice Chairman, to give it to her, but let me read something about Talia. Talia demonstrated real character through her community involvement, school activities, and academic achievement. Talia is a senior at Wyndham High School in the Academy of Humanities and Arts. She's constantly choosing various honors, advanced placement, and early college experiences as her courses. Talia wishes to pursue an education in the field of political science. Talia is very involved at Wyndham High School. She's a member of the National Junior Honors Society and the student government, is correct?
Yes.
Correct, yeah. Where she held the position of class officer and secretary. Talia plays tennis on the tennis team and field hockey, and she's the editor of the Wyndham School Leadership Magazine. Wow, what a school. One teacher described Talia's leadership the following way. Talia is a model student and peer leader. She's always prepared and actively participates in her own education. While math is not her favorite subject, she took AP Calculus because she knew it was good for her education, and she's excelling in it. While working with her peers and non-math topic arrives, she listens to others and eloquently expresses her opinion. She's always willing to give and support others. Thank you, Talia, for being an excellent student at Wyndham High School.
Thank you.
The other award is for Mr. Jorge Medina, and he's not here tonight, and I think his parents are not here tonight, so why we don't wait. Jorge Medina is not here tonight, right? So we want to wait for the next meeting to give it to Mr. Jorge Medina.
Okay.
Okay.
So you have the Fire Marshal?
The Fire Marshal could not make it tonight, so he sent his regrets, and he will be here for the next meeting.
Okay. Can you get the... So, the next item on the agenda, I should mention that Mrs. Suba is out for, not able to attend this evening, which is why I'm chairing tonight's meeting. And so the next item on the agenda is Public Comment. There is an item on the agenda tonight to review a policy on public comment, and I would like to point out that the existing version of the policy, as well as the proposed version of the policy, does specify that public comment should be limited to items within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. That can be interpreted fairly broadly, but I should remind people that the Board of Education is a legislative body, we do policy. So we are concerned that the, for example, that the curricula in the schools meets the state requirements, but we are not in charge of deciding what teachers, what building teachers are assigned to, or how many teachers are assigned to teach particular subjects, and a number of other things. So some issues that sometimes come up in public comment are better directed toward the principal of the school involved with the superintendent of schools rather than the Board of Education. So with that in mind, the first person that we have on here is Ms. Nicole Bay.
Good evening. Nicole Bay, Wyndham teacher, Wyndham parent, and Wyndham resident. In review of just kind of what happened over the last meeting that I was here, I was very disheartened at the fact that my child was not brought into the lottery due to the policy changes, but I do see that they are on the agenda tonight, so I'm hoping to have a couple of questions answered, like the policy no longer being in effect, I'm making reference to Policy 5117.11, the lottery process change. There is a line here that says that the policy will no longer be in effect after May 13, 2016, which leads me to believe that if a staff member were to pull out after that date, that there would be no chance of my child filling that seat. I'm curious as to why that policy ends on that date and isn't being carried out as the lottery is until five days before the next lottery. Another question that I had that I hope will be answered is another review that you have in your reference materials tonight that refers to the Schools' Operations Plan, which I pulled out, and the newest version that I can find was revised March of 2013. So if there is a newer version out there, I'd love to know where to find it so I can see some of the changes that were made, because if this isn't indeed the latest version, it says that preferential entrance will be given to children whose parents are staff members at STEM Academy after the initial enrollment process. And it is my understanding that if changes are made to the operations plan, that they need to be approved by the state, and I'm not sure what the process is on that, and the latest revised date. Also, I was kind of surprised at the end of the last board meeting that one of the comments made was, "How can we retain teachers?" Well, I kind of sat there and said, "Seriously? I just begged you for a free way for you to retain some teachers, and I'm not threatening to leave." So people in the public and people here who think that is a threat, I am not leaving. I was born and bred to teach here in Wyndham, and I plan to teach here until I can't teach anymore. So I'm not going anywhere, this is not a threat, but clearly it is a way to keep your staff that is currently here happy. So I'm very sad, and I just want to share a little tidbit with you. My daughter's four years old, she's in pre-K, will be attending kindergarten next year, and as long as, as long as I can remember that she can talk, her first town landmark that she recognized was Barrows School, probably because while I was pregnant with her and once she was delivered, she spent a lot of time on the grounds checking out the building in progress, and every time we'd go by, she would say, "Look, Mama, our school," because I had been promised that she would go there, because I was a staff member there at Barrows. We would go to the school, to the playground on weekends, and she would come to the concerts, and she would see the kids, and she'd see the teachers, and, "Mama, that's going to be my music teacher, and Mama, this is my school," and she has a great pride for Barrows, as do I. What's really sad is now I have to kind of break her heart and say to her, "That's not going to be your school." So I'm pretty devastated about that, as I'm sure she will be too. But on that note, I do want to thank you all for revisiting the policy that you were putting into place and giving other staff members a chance at having their children brought into Barrows. I want to be on record saying that I do think it's a fair policy that all staff members in the district are given the opportunity to use preference. However, I feel as though those of us who started at Barrows and were promised something, our promise was broken. And quite honestly, I've put blood, sweat, and tears into the middle school and into Barrows. I promote Wyndham Public Schools, to anyone who will listen to me. My heart and soul is here, and so to have my heart broken by something that I care about so much is pretty devastating. So I'm interested to hear about the School Operations Plan and how and when that was changed, to see if maybe there's some state recourse. I also kind of looked up the definition for a grandfather clause. And a grandfather clause is a provision in which an old rule continues to apply to some existing situations, while a new rule will apply to all future cases. Seems to me like this was the perfect opportunity for you to use a grandfather clause. There were very few people that it would have impacted, however, promises could have kept, been kept and not broken. I wonder if maybe promises being broken and not kept are some of the reasons for the mass exodus that we're seeing of teachers and administrators fleeing from our district to find new districts and positions. And with that, I will close.
Thank you. Okay. The next person, this is, it says Latino America, but I think it's Joshua Fortuna?
Yes, Joshua Fortuna.
Fortuna?
Yeah, Joshua Fortuna.
So we have a delegation here, I think, Latino America? Okay. Is there a spokesperson here, I guess?
I imagine it's Joshua.
Okay. Right ahead.
They say they don't speak much English, so somebody can translate. Joshua, Joshua, want to translate first?
Sure.
So come up, come up by the microphone.
There's a microphone right here.
You can sit and use this mic if you want to.
I'll be nice and loud from here, I promise.
No, no, it's televised, so you have to, the microphones are so people who are watching television can understand. Pull the microphone up and...
There you go. Bueno. Buenas noches. Nosotros somos representantes del grupo Latinoamérica, y estamos aquí para presentar y para invitarlos a la obra que vamos a presentar el 3 de junio de 2016. Se llevará a cabo aquí en el auditorio a las 3 de la tarde. Good evening. We are the representatives of the group Latinoamérica, and we are representing here to invite you hard to the play. That will do June 3, 2016. It will take place right here in the auditorium on CPM.
Three.
Bueno. El grupo Latinoamérica consiste en luchar por los derechos, en luchar por los derechos de nosotros los latinos.
The group Latinoamérica consists of Latinos struggling for their rights here.
Nosotros vinimos aquí a invitarlos a una obra que se llevará a cabo en el auditorio, y la obra trata de lo que nosotros los latinos tenemos que sacrificar para llegar a este país y lo que vivimos ya cuando estamos en este país.
We came here to invite you all to a play that we'll be putting on at the high school. The play is about what us Latinos sacrifice in order to get here and in the process of being here.
Nos inspiramos en hacer esta obra porque tenemos, hemos tenido muchas vivencias que nos han marcado tanto dentro de la escuela como fuera de la escuela.
We are putting on this play because we have had a lot of experiences that have soured us both in and out of school.
Y queríamos que, si ustedes pudieran estar presentes, para que vieran lo difícil que nosotros se nos hace poder desenvolvernos en este país y lo mucho que nos exigen a veces si nosotros poderlo dar, porque no tenemos las herramientas para poder darlo, ¿sabes? Y queremos para que...
And we would like to invite you all, and we would like you all to be present at the play, so you can see the challenges that we have in developing ourselves in this country.
Y queremos que ustedes vean, para que tengan una idea...
And so you all can see it, so you have an idea.
...de lo difícil que se nos hace poder desenvolvernos aquí.
Of the hardship we go through in developing ourselves here.
Y nos queremos que con una obra pues se le haría más fácil entenderlo porque hay personas que no creen en palabras, sino en hechos.
And we were hoping that with the play would be easier for you all to understand because it is difficult to understand with words and easier with actions.
Y que mejor que una obra donde podemos actuar y con las vivencias que hemos tenido las podemos plasmar en un teatro, y ustedes pueden ver que realmente nosotros no estamos mintiendo, tampoco estamos inventando nada, sino que es lo que a nosotros nos pasa y lo que estamos viviendo, y queremos darlo a demostrar.
And in the play, you can see that we are not exaggerating, we are not inventing. These are life experiences that we are demonstrating.
¿Cómo se llama la obra? ¿Qué título tiene? Latinos en Estados Unidos. Latinos en Estados Unidos.
So the time and the date again?
La fecha y la hora.
El 3 de junio a las 3 de la tarde.
The 3rd of June at 3:00 PM.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is it possible that you can video it and get it to Dr. Garcia to be put on the district website? I will be at the band concert at Six Flags that day, I've already...
Si, será posible que graben el evento y que la doctora Garcia lo ponga en la página web que tienen, porque ella se comprometió con un evento de la banda que va to Six Flags.
No hay ningún problema con nosotros.
Okay, thank you.
I would love to attend. My son's participating in a band competition.
Me encantaría asistir, pero ya tiene una competencia de banda, mi padre.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, muchas gracias. Buen trabajo, buen trabajo.
Okay. Ms. Galucci, you're next.
Mary Galucci from North Street, and I have a son at the high school and one in the Barrows School, and I just want to say I would like to attend that performance. And three of my grandparents were undocumented immigrants to America, and I know what you're talking about. Most Americans forget that. We are mostly immigrants here, and mostly illegal initially. I would like to say you did not get the vote out. I am very disappointed. Where are the people who put you into office?
Excuse me, Ms. Galucci, this is not a political forum. Please stick to the topics in the agenda.
I'm talking about the budget for the school district, which I believe is part of the, and the fact that it is not supported by the officials of this town. And also, the contributions parents made to crafting that budget were not met with great support at the time. I would also like to mention a comment you just made about what types of things we can discuss, and perhaps we should have dialogues with the principal. It's hard to have a dialogue with a principal who's new, interim, on their way out, because that is the situation in this district. I am commenting on something that is on tonight's agenda about substitute teachers, which I saw. We should find and pay the subs ourselves. It is extremely disappointing that a huge chunk of money goes to Kelly Services. The pay that the sub receives is much lower than what you're putting here. As for the building subs, by the time you calculate the hours of a school day and the days in a year, this is hardly over minimum wage. This is not really promoting teaching. How can someone earning $180,000 approve of these poverty wages? Also, following up on something mentioned for several of the last meetings at Public Comment, have you scheduled any board meetings to address staff, administrative, and teacher turnover and retention? I would like data. Data seems to overwhelm the lives of schoolchildren and teachers, but where is the data when parents and community members requested a view? I would like to know teacher and staff numbers over the last 10 years in each school and also in central office. How long do teachers stay? How have mentoring programs changed? Why do teachers go on to successful careers elsewhere? And it's not all that we train them and they go somewhere else and use that. No, we push them out, and then they blossom, where they're appreciated. Regarding the position of Anthony Gasper, yes, he left Wyndham to take a promotion, but he did apply for the promotion in this district. What kind of message did you send him? What about current assistant principals? I see there's going to be some programs discussed tonight. I need to learn more about it. Are we missing the forest for the trees? Do we sufficiently appreciate, mentor, and guide our own staff? I actually have doubts about that. I have also mentioned state tests that we should be doing the minimum. Instead, we add. And also, the issue of teacher evaluations. Do you ever testify to the State Department of, State Board of Ed about what your thoughts are on these things? The impact that they have on a district like this? The stress the children feel? I do have to say, they're stressed, they see their teachers leaving, they see their teachers being humiliated while they're being evaluated with a classroom observation.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, point privilege.
This is a new day, isn't it?
Ms. Galucci, this is not a dialogue, and we would love your input, that's why we have Subcommittee. It's dialogue.
I'm not asking for dialogue, I'm making comments.
You're making up the agenda as you go, ma'am.
I went through the agenda that you presented. It had substitute teachers, it has a principal mentoring program, and I'm mentioning that right now. There's no comment afterwards. And I have asked about teacher retention. You never have meetings devoted to that. It's all just new things to distract people. As for building renovations and the high school, I'm not sure if the May 19 Building Committee meeting is supposed to be one of these new ones of opening things. I just saw something on the calendar. That happens to be 3rd Thursday, the bands are going to be there, the high school bands, and there's an award ceremony in Mansfield for my daughter, so I don't know if that's a date, but it's not a good one. An international baccalaureate, we have not been told about it as parents at the high school.
Thank you. Mr. Flores?
I'm scared right now to be holding, I'm scared of having here. I could have any...
Pull the microphone over, please. There you go.
Now, let me tell you, I come to this board, they have to repeat whatever you know, because you had the agenda, and you want me to stick in the agenda. But what happened in the asteroid came from the sky, and nobody knew it. I want to warn you that is, you don't know that, right? You know that the asteroid coming down to Earth, I want to give you thumbs up. But if I cannot give you thumbs up, then I cannot be here. Because when I talk about the agenda, I want to inform you and you, something that will happen in this town that can be beneficial for you and the children.
Mr. Flores, please, sir, please stick to the agenda.
I'll do it.
There are many other, there are many other forums within the district to have a conversation.
You went to my, to the town council, I'll give you that. I should, I had a book. You went to our meeting, and I make a point of order to make a motion to allow the board member to speak to us without this board's support. And now I'm into this meeting, and you...
Mr. Flores. Okay, wait a minute. I would like to point out that there is no statutory requirement to have board, to have public comment at all. All right? And we're, we're making an effort to be as broad-minded as possible about this, but the board has business to conduct. We meet roughly 23 times a year, and, well, you have, there are lots of ways to communicate with the board, including emails, and Mr. Flores has sent one, actually several, this week, on a different subject, but we all read it. And so public comment is not the only way to communicate with the board.
If I may say, the policy was reviewed, and it was granted to public comment, the first one for three minutes, the second one for two minutes.
We're having, we're voting on that, that's an agenda item later, so we'll discuss that later.
Okay, yeah.
But the policy as, as it exists...
Yeah.
And as proposed, says that public comment should be on items that are within the jurisdiction of the board. That's, that's what the policy says now, and that presumably is what the policy's going to say in the future, unless this evening you wish to change it.
It was reviewed last time, I was in the policy committee when that was reviewed, and you were there too, which we stated...
Wait a minute.
We stated that the first three minutes...
We're out of order here. We have this on the agenda later, can you just hold the discussion until it comes up?
I just want to clarify.
No, it will come, you can clarify as much as you are, Casillas, but it's on the agenda later, and that's the time we should do it.
Okay.
Right now, we should give the public a chance to speak, so... Mr. Crane, you're next.
Yeah, my name is Henry Crane, and I live on Wyndham Street here in the romantic. And stealing from my neighbors, your budget in VFW went down by four votes. And I think there are many things that could be done about that situation, but I'd rather not get in that because it was negative, and I watched the town council go quickly and do a quick burn on public comment after someone used how-it's-earth language on them in one other meeting. So, thank you. But at some other point, I have been allowed to speak at your subcommittees, at least one of them notably in order, while acting like a gentleman, I was hoping, but allowed to speak there, and I think there's probably a Subcommittee where I could share what is needed, or where I feel my neighbors could share what they feel is needed. And having said that, there's many things that are really awesome about your system, and the AP students are the first thing that comes to my mind. Their successes, their front-page news, and everything else that has happened has done nothing but bless and benefit your school system, and certainly your chances at the polls to pass any budget that you come up with. As far as in netizing with your awards that you just gave out, so it's rather tangential, I admit, but it's there. You're going to be speaking about a public comment period at some time tonight, which several of you have alluded to in your earlier comments, and I would encourage you to follow through on that and decide. It is your show, you do run this place, and we elected you to do that. But while we elect you to do that, we expect that at some point we'll be able to speak to you publicly even. So I would encourage you to at least consider what I read in item number six. As I understand it, reference six, that seems to hint that maybe you'll go ahead and give us a chance of public comment. If you want to add ideas onto your agenda sheets or something to encourage better conduct for my neighbors and me, I would encourage you to do that as well. So with that, I'm going to shut up, let somebody else talk, and let you run your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Lambert, you signed up to speak under public comment?
Good evening, my name is Tracy Lambert. I am a taxpayer here in Wyndham and a mother of an eighth-grade student at Barrows. I also sit on the Board of Education, obviously. Good evening. I speak to you tonight from this seat and not from my customary Board of Education seat. This is because the leadership of the Wyndham Board of Education has chosen to remove board comment from the board agendas. The decision was made last week during a special meeting of the Executive Committee and communicated to the board in an email from Mrs. Suba. Mrs. Suba noted the board comment had not appeared on the agenda prior to December 2013. This was at the beginning of my year, my two-year tenure as Chair of the Board. I believed and still believe that every member of this board has a voice and should be able to speak during board meetings. The current leadership has removed board comment from the agenda because it is unable or unwilling to answer questions from its members, and that makes them feel threatened. If they remove the comment section from the agenda, the presumption is that we will be silenced. The email continued that members should make requests to the Chair for agenda items one week in advance of the scheduled board meeting via email. So much for transparency. Just for some background, the Wyndham Town Council and its most recent agenda of May 3 lists as item number four, Town Council Comment. Wyndham Board of Finance and its most recent posted agenda of April 20 lists number three, item number three, as Board of Finance Comment. Locally, our boards recognize the inclusiveness of their members to be able to speak freely at meetings. Also, upon doing a small amount of research, I can note that many districts in which this board may do well to emulate have board comment. These include Berlin, West Hartford, South Windsor, Plainfield, Plainville, Ellington, Eastlime, Waterbury, Wolcott, New Haven, and Norwich. I understand that sitting in the seats allows me only to speak and not to have a conversation or get responses. However, this seat for me is no different than the seat at the board table I normally occupy. Since November, I have read my board packets and all the materials that come with them. I have respectfully asked questions in meetings. I believe we are doing the work of the public, the taxpayers, the staff, and most importantly, the children of this district. I've always read my board packets, I just said since November because that's when I moved my seat. None of the questions that I have asked have been answered. None of the requests I have asked have been honored. In November, I made a request for an accounting of special master funds. The superintendent stalled, and the vice chair in absence of the chair challenged me to FOI the information. However, when the Board of Finance requested the same information, it was provided. This is not transparency. I came to the budget discussions having read the budget at length. I had prepared many questions. I had no idea that a private email had been passed among select board members. I was interrupted during my questions and treated poorly for doing my job as a board member. This is not cooperation. Recently, a community member, a Wyndham Public School... Recently, a community member, a Wyndham Public School parent, attempted to attend an Executive Committee meeting. The parent was denied access by the superintendent and board members in attendance. Any committee of the Board of Education is open to the public. The superintendent and members of the Executive Committee are aware or should be aware of this fact. This is a lack of transparency to the public directly. Recently, a mailing arrived in my home from Wyndham Board of Education. The superintendent, two assistant superintendents, and nine members of the Board of Ed are listed by name on this mailing. On the back of this document, the title "International Baccalaureate Program in Development" appears with an ensuing article. As the statement, quote, "The district is developing an international baccalaureate IB program at Wyndham High School," end quote. Not exploring, not considering. I do not believe that Wyndham Board of Education, who approved two academies at the high school, who approved the ECHO program also here, who approved expanding the Campaneros program, who approved the theme for the Magnet School twice, has never voted to approve the IB program here at the high school. Moreover, other than an outline at the board retreat, this has never been publicly discussed by the board. Please, let's not kid ourselves. The retreat was held in a different town on a Friday in January, and was not truly a public meeting. I've also requested a workshop meeting on this topic. For the information of the public, an IB school, Magnet School, exists in East Hartford. Putting aside costs, the small percentage of our students who would qualify for this program right now, the fact that monies can better be spent supporting the students and programs we currently have, this was not discussed or approved by the Board of Ed. I don't know why we feel the need to reinvent an IB school here in Willimantic when the IB school that already exists in East Hartford was named number-one high school in Connecticut by both the Washington Post and the U.S. News &amp; World Report. I'm sad to be sitting in this seat. The Board of Ed leadership feels that board comments are counterproductive to the, quote, "efficiency" and prevent the board from addressing matters pertinent to the board's mission. To finish on a positive note, I was honored to volunteer as a photographer at the recent junior/senior prom this past weekend. Ms. Kathy Pekarovic did a wonderful job as class advisor in her prom before retirement, her last prom before retirement. And last evening, I attended the induction of the Barrows National Junior Honor Society. It's a lovely, it is a lovely ceremony, and I am proud of the students. And to be a representative of this board for all Wyndham Public School students, their parents, guardians, teachers, and staff, thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's the end of the list of people that have signed up. So, we'll continue with the superintendent's report.
Definitely. We have some recognition of students, and I want to, it's in your pocket, but those couple words of recognition. First is the Wyndham ECHO students. I don't know if you'll be aware that on May 2nd, they conducted a food drive, a couple weeks before that, and donated over 3,000 items to the soup kitchen located at the church in the corner of Spring and Lead Walnut, the Covenant Soup Kitchen. So, we want to congratulate all the students that were led, directed, or facilitated by Mrs. Bowling from the ECHO program, who donated, again, more than 3,000 items to the soup kitchen, and this was part of their learning experience curriculum. Also, congratulation to the chess team. This is the first time that the chess team has gone outside of Wyndham, and we have a couple students that did a fantastic job, and they came back with lots of honors to the high school. So, we have Kelvin Lorenzo, Taylor Savo, Michael Connor, Sam Halberg, Stefan Eredia, and the club advisor, Dr. Tom Ocampo. Bear Academy, we have Sawyer Veron. Sawyer Veron is an eighth-grade student at Barrows and has been invited to attend the National Invention Convention and Entrepreneur Expo in Washington, D.C. later this month. So, we want to congratulate Sawyer Veron for that. Only 40 inventors were invited out of 1,000 students, so we want to thank them very much. Congratulate. And then we have also from Barrows. We have Noah Casey, Blake Burey, and Levy Siffrinson, I hope I pronounced it correctly, Siffrinson, both of them from Barrows. They publish a winner magazine in Connecticut. They call it the Student Writer Magazine. The Connecticut Student Writer Magazine is a popular avenue for student writing, sponsored by the Connecticut Writing Center, and these students magazine were selected. What a great honor also for Barrows and for their students. And I just want to let you know a little bit more of the colleges that our students are attending. You'll have a list in your pocket, but we do have some more colleges that were added today. I think you have Baker College, Connecticut, these are Western Connecticut. But there were some others that were added today, and I will share that with you. Lake University of Maine was added today, and University of Sonoma, Virginia Tech, they're already there.
Dr. Garcia, FMA, Rensselaer Polytech, UConn School of Engineering, Worcester Polytech, and Central Connecticut State University.
So, I will share that with the board.
Did not appear on that list either. Thank you.
Well, that's the list that the high school gave us.
Yeah, I know, no, I know. I just noticed that one that a student had got, had accepted at Rensselaer was not on the list, so I...
Yeah, but the high school on a regular basis gave us this, so we will invite the one that the high school has given us. I'm pretty sure they will give us a new list tomorrow.
Good, thank you.
And also want to recognize the high, the middle school and the middle school administrative team. For the first time in history, the middle school will have an orientation for parents during school hours. Traditionally, the orientation for sixth-grade parents and students take place after the school hours. And this is the first time, and we're trying to encourage in the school to have the orientation during school hours. We want parents to come and get a feel of the school, what took place during school hours, and this is the first time that they will have this orientation for parents during school hours, and we want to congratulate the middle school, and I will share that with you on my update. So, it will take place on May 26th. Parents will arrive at 12:30, will have lunch, but parents will be able to fit in the classroom at the middle school. So, we want to congratulate them. So, those are my recognition.
Okay. Sir?
So, now we can go to the other opportunities. So, two things that we're doing in the district that are great, a great impact for us to impact teaching and learning and improve the capacity of teachers and also student achievement is the teacher leadership opportunity. Wyndham Public School has joined a partnership with the University of Connecticut School of Education to create a three-year pilot program of teacher leadership. The first-year teachers will be trained in effective instruction. Second-year teachers will be demonstration classroom, and the third-year teachers will be facilitators of learning in their, in their school. We're planning to start with only 20 teachers district-wide. However, we have 38 teachers that sign up and came to our session. So, we're very excited that we are planning for 20. We have 30-plus, and so we'll have to go through a selection process. And in your pocket, you have the brochure that went out to the teachers. Another opportunity that we have for teachers, these are teachers that are planning to improve in instruction. We also have an opportunity with the UConn School of Education and with Lead Connecticut to offer two teachers that want to move in administration, the opportunity to spend one year at UConn, pay tuition, pay salary, obtaining their O-92. We have 26 applicants for this program, and we'll be doing the interview pretty soon.
So, the public's benefit in O-92 is what?
The O-92 is the administrator certificate. So, once they're finished the program, they'll be able to become principal, assistant principal, whatever administrator. So, we are very pleased that UConn and Lead Connecticut are partnering with us in this That program is called the residency program. And you have in your pocket the interview question, the preliminary question that we're giving to them. We have a lot of summer opportunity for our teachers. I'm not going to mention all, but we do have lots of STEM opportunities. Teachers at Barrows working and incorporating the NGNC standards. We also have math teachers at Barrows from the Intel Training, and we have offered that training to other teachers outside the district. We've invited, I believe, five more teachers, not only from Barrows. Then we have curriculum map and curriculum assessment, so we have lots of opportunities during the summer. As back testing has gone, we have not received any major concern from the school. It has gone very smoothly. Students are saying that the eighth-grade math test is very difficult. Other than that, we have not received, Neil, any major concern that you've had?
No, there's been no major...
No major, major concern.
Yeah, for people watching, this is the Smarter Balance Testing Program that's required by the state. It's taking the place of what used to be the Connecticut Mastery Test.
Yeah. And also want to make sure that I invite the community members and also the board. Our family and community expo will take place on May 21st, starting at 11 o'clock in Johnson Square. We want to thank Bill Stover, Kerry Markie, and the Home Affairs Department, all are putting this together, and so we hope that you will attend. Last year was a tremendous success. You were there.
Yeah, I'm volunteering this year, too.
Okay. There will be lots of community organizations there, lots of parents, lots of, a great event for our students, and lots of music and lots of food. So, invite the community to come, and we invite all of them. It's Saturday, the 21st, from 11:00 to 3:00. So, those are the superintendent's report, and also we have, we have two policies for first reading.
So, on policy 5123, I noticed promotion and acceleration retention. There's a statement in there about the board wanting to minimize or eliminate social promotion.
I thought it was eliminate.
I believe we wanted to eliminate the word, or to delete the word, minimize, and simply state that the board wants to eliminate social promotion. That would mean, now, this is sort of a temporary patch because we're in the process of developing...
The report card, the standard report card.
Report card standards, which would specify the requirements for actually being promoted from one grade to another, not based on age, but based on accomplishment. And of course, students that have an individual learning plan would be evaluated based on their, their own learning plan and promoted accordingly.
Yeah. So, we're in the process. Mr. Neil Weathers will be heading that project. We start the planning already for the standard report card. So, we have, we started with elementary first, and we're looking at grade, we're debating K-23 or 325, but the conversation already started, and in the next couple of days, we should have a plan how to roll that out.
So, between now and the second reading, we'll delete that one.
Definitely, we delete that. If that minimize, the word was to eliminate.
Mrs. Lambert?
Dr. Garcia, on the teacher leadership opportunities, I wanted to give you the opportunity to get through your, your presentation. How is this being funded? Where is the revenue stream coming from this? Is this local funds? And what do you anticipate the actual cost to be if we're only taking two teachers, I believe it said?
The teacher leadership opportunity?
The teacher leadership opportunity, yes.
For the O-92?
For the O-92, right.
It's funded through Lead Connecticut, the state, and alliance.
Okay. So, is all of that funding for both of those programs firmed up with the questionable budget process we're under now?
Well, the, well, one of them is more firm up than the other. The O-92 is a combination of Lead Connecticut, Alliance, and district funding. So, what we heard this morning, that they're still committed to both of those budgets.
So, is the funding from the 1516 budget or the 1617 budget?
The 1617 budget.
Which is the forthcoming budget, which is still up in the air.
Right. And do you have an anticipated figure for this?
I don't have the exact numbers. One is, there are several costs. For example, tuition is one cost, just tuition, and salaries.
Okay.
Because they receive their salaries. So, the state and Lead Connecticut put in 50% of their salaries.
Okay. Can you get us a figure of what you would anticipate this would cost for a year?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
So, are there any other questions regarding...
It does depend on who is selected, because we don't know the salary dependent on the person who is selected.
Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding the superintendent's report?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. Finance and Audit met tonight. The Finance Committee would like to add budget transfers to the agenda. So, would entertain, actually, since this is coming from committee, it presumably already has a motion and a second. But in order to add something to the agenda, there are six of us present, so it'll take at least four votes. And I assume that our Director of Finance has copies of the proposed transfers for the board members who didn't receive one at the Finance and Audit meeting tonight. But is there any discussion regarding adding this item to the agenda? If not, all in favor of adding transfers recommended by the Director of Finance to the agenda? All in favor? Okay. So, that'll be action item F. The other item on the agenda of the Finance and Audit Committee was our quarterly financial statement for the quarter ending March 31st. We are actually, we're slightly behind or negative on the year by about a little over $56,000, which actually is a little ahead of where we were last year at the end of the quarter. And we will be able to make the adjustments necessary to bring that back up to even. We're required to end the fiscal year solvent. We can't, we can't end with a, with a negative balance in the budget, and we won't. So, some adjustments, so there's some, there's some places where there's still some uncertainty about the last couple of months of the academic year, and, but we shouldn't have a problem finishing the year with, without a negative balance. We did briefly discuss the fact that the budget didn't pass yesterday, largely as a result of uncertainties about what the state's doing or has done. We, we're still a little uncertain about exactly how much impact it's going to have on the Board of Education's budget, since most of the impact of the short, the cuts that the state is proposing affect the town rather than the board. The cut in ECS money that's been reported in the press apparently is a reduction in alliance funds, not in the general education budget funds. So, that's not part of the package that the taxpayers will vote on. So, the Board of Finance at their last meeting, in cutting our budget request, pointed to a couple of items, one of which was a fee that we pay for, to East Con for managing the Magnet School grant. However, that fee's actually paid out of the Magnet School grant, which is also not part of the general fund budget. So, we can't save any money out of the general fund budget by cancelling that contract and reassigning it to our finance office. In fact, if we did that, it would cost us money rather than save us money. So, we're, the Board of Finance will meet next Wednesday, and we'll point that out to the Board of Finance and hope that then maybe they'll adjust the budget request upward by a little bit, other than leaving it alone or cutting it before we vote on it again. But the Board of Finance will do what the Board of Finance does, and we'll make the best case we can. And I actually would encourage parents or anyone else who wants to speak to the Board of Finance about the magnitude of the education budget and what it ought to be, to attend the Board of Finance meeting next Wednesday night at the, at the Town Hall. That concludes the Finance and Audit Committee report. And unless there's some questions, I'll turn it over to Mr. Collegian for Planning and Design, which also met this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sewell. The ongoing state budget, which is going steadily downhill, certainly is not letting any confidence to anyone, especially in a district like ours. The work that's been done over the past four or five years or more on the high school renovation and the entire master plan for how we use our school buildings and the work they need. We have a project presently ongoing at the middle school to replace the roof and to put a cogent system on that roof. That's moving along quite nicely. We took bids last evening on the building committee for the electrical contractors, and that will be awarded shortly. The way we've approached and recommendations made by the committee to the board concerning renovating is new. We have always, first with Mrs. Lambert as Chair, and now with my tenure as Chair, tried to be as thorough and as structural and as flexible, considering the needs of the community, the needs of our, of our students and the programs that support them. So, we're taking a small step back, and we're going to put together all of the information that we have gathered over the past four or five years or more, concerning the high school and the Community Education Center that we have described in that building, this building. And... And hopefully approach the repair, renovation and upgrades of all of our buildings in a a little more flexible although across time potentially more expensive way. Just another option that we're looking at. Those options certainly are going to be discussed and are always discussed at school planning and design, which is a working committee like all of our subcommittees and engenders and encourages communication and dialogue with the community and any interested parties. We, it's been, it's been suggested and I made a report last month concerning a suggestion by a member of the town council to in some way expand if possible a way of engendering and getting good information from the community about all of the work that we have done on SPMD. All the options, presentation, and so we're working on the form of, of that so that we can enhance hopefully and, and bring together more opinions and that will enhance our ability to, to go forward. We discussed briefly at our most recent committee meeting, which was this evening, earlier in the, in the afternoon, our dual language program. And that, like all of our, all of our considered programs is being significantly of the plans for. We're not shelving them, but we are certainly because of the state budget issues trying to be more flexible in the way we're going to approach them. We will, this committee and, and hopefully our board will be doing everything we can to be as flexible as possible to satisfy the needs of the community and in the most cost-effective way possible and affording our children the most vigorous education we can give them. That is my report.
Wells?
Go ahead.
Wells? Wells?
Oh, Wells, yes, we indeed are doing, thank you, Mrs. Lambert.
Doesn't matter if I'm sitting here.
No, no, that's okay. A lot's been going on in my life over the past couple of days in Hartford. The Wells, well, we drove four holes at two schools and there's water. The process, the process was approached with our building committee, we thought very vigorously. We crossed our Ts and dotted our Is and how long has it taken this time, Mrs. Lambert?
Year and a half.
Year and a half.
These guys thought they were going to get it done in six months.
It's a pretty straightforward thing. You drove a hole around, you put in some pipe, you put in some controls and boom. There you have it. Not so much. To be, to be quite brutally honest about it, the committee was very aggressive, crossed our Ts, dotted our Is. We believe we used the appropriate supportive professionals for the process but in typical fashion and I'm not certainly placing blame, but when you deal with multiple bureaucracies and licensures and seasons, this is in fact New England. Getting those holes drilled and drowned and the water to the schools has taken us 18 months, but we're almost there. We're, we're short of turning the valves on. All the work is done. The final testing and, and water treatment is in place and it's all done except for the shouting. We're about to turn the valves on and get nice clean water to all of our schools that are affected. Wyndham Center and North Wyndham School. So there you go.
Since Ms. Sebel is not here tonight, I'll make the reports for the executive committee. Couple of items that we've met on, one is on the agenda tonight, the, I figured exactly what that policy number is, but we've got the motion here somewhere. Oh, there it is. It's policy 1517.11. We'll discuss that under item G, so we'll comment on it now. Since Ms. Lambert brought it up at the meeting last week. Oh, I would like to apologize publicly to Ms. Bay for the confusion about the difference between an executive committee meeting and an executive session. An executive committee meeting, as Ms. Lambert pointed out, is a public meeting that is open to the public. And in fact, we not only encourage every member of the board to attend, but the public is welcome to attend. And, and we're reasonably flexible about, you know, comments or questions from people who do choose to attend and I know Ms. Bay was particularly interested in the subject of that meeting that night, so I'd like to apologize to her for not giving her immediate admittance. But we'll talk about that policy later. Okay, so the other thing that Ms. Lambert brought up that is the issue of board comment on the agenda. The, the question here is how to, what, what, what do board members discuss and we have business to conduct? And so any board member can request, you know, with, with some advance notice that an item for discussion be placed on the agenda and in addition to that, we clearly have ways of communicating with each other. I mean, we're not going to be having email conversations among ourselves that would constitute an illegal meeting, but it is certainly possible for any board member to ask the chair or the superintendent a question. I do some, do so probably with some regularity. And it's, it's and it's also possible, as Ms. Lambert demonstrated, if someone really wants to say something to the board to, to sign up for a public comment period. Mr. Flores does that at town council meetings with some frequency and, and that's, that's also acceptable if there's no other way to, to do it. But some of our meetings run rather, rather late and we don't really need an unscripted conversation when we have other means of communicating with each other, which is why it, it doesn't have to be on the agenda. If you want to add a motion to put it back on the agenda, all right, it takes, since there are six of us here, it would take four votes to do it, but.
Yeah, my, my understanding is that when you have a committee like the executive committee, it has to come to the board for approval. It has got to be eliminated.
No.
Like a.
Wait, wait a minute. The agenda is, 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 the policy is that the agenda is constructed by the superintendent. Well, actually, it's the, the board's agenda, so it's, it's constructed by the, by the chair of the board with, in collaboration with the superintendent who obviously has business that the board needs to conduct. And in fact, the board comment section was added to the agenda by Mrs. Lambert when she was chair and she had, and she had it without, without, without asking anybody whether or not to do, she just did it.
No, no, we discussed it in executive committee. I brought it forward to the board and asked if anybody had any objections.
I don't recall that that happened, but it didn't matter. You had the right to do it anyway.
I understand and I didn't say nobody, I didn't say anyone didn't have the right to, to take it off the agenda. I just said that I will continue to have my.
So at any rate, you, it was added when you became chair. You had, you had the right to do that. And executive committee record is taking it off.
I, I don't understand that. The way I don't understand is the committee was the one that made the, the decision of taking the comments out. And no committee have the power to make any decision. They have to bring it to the board. That's what I understand what a committee is supposed to do.
Can I say something?
If the board agree, then we'll take it out.
I, let me respond to that.
Yeah.
Ms. Lambert just said that the decision was taken in her executive committee. Didn't you just say that?
No, no, I said it came forth from the executive committee when I was chair and I brought it to the entire board at a meeting and asked.
Maybe it should be in the minutes.
It probably was. I didn't have a chance to research that, but I asked at a board meeting if anyone had any objections to adding board comments to the agenda. When no one voiced in opposition, it was added to the agenda. I was trying to be collaborative.
I can't recall.
No, I know.
Wait, wait, wait.
It was two and a half years ago.
It should be in the minutes though.
It may be, I couldn't look.
If, if you want to put something on the agenda to discuss executive board comments, then the proper thing to do is add something to agenda. Otherwise, the discussion is not in order. It's not on the agenda. So.
You're talking about the removal in the committee. That's why it's appropriate to discuss it now. We, you're doing the executive committee report.
I did.
You talked about removing the board comment. Mr. Montalvo was speaking to it.
He, he asked if the committee, if the, if the committee could do that. The answer is the committee cannot do that, but the chair can.
Correct.
The chair can, but at that particular committee. Okay, so it doesn't, it doesn't have to come to the board, even though it's a committee. That was the point.
The, the decision does not have to come with the board.
But it's, it was done by the committee, not, not by the chair.
The email said, the email said it was done by the committee.
I received say by the committee, not by the chair. I understand the chair had the right to do that. But the email that we got, say the executive committee made that decision and that's what I cannot understand. Because a committee can not make a decision.
Technically correct. The committee does not have the right to make the decision as a committee.
Exact, and that's why in this agenda, there is no board comment. Because that made that decision already without the concern of the full board.
It doesn't, doesn't need the consent of the full board. My, my point is the chair has the right to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, you're correct in that the committee itself, you know, that the email is technically incorrect in that the committee does not have the right to add or subtract something from the agenda. But.
That's my point.
If there's something you want to discuss, you have the means to have it added to the agenda. If there's a question that you have, you have the means to inquire of the superintendent or the, or the chair of the board at any time about the question, okay? And Mrs. Lambert has demonstrated that if you don't get an answer to your question, you have an opportunity, there are ways that you can, you can point out that you've asked a question that you didn't get an answer to. So we don't need to spend time, our time or the public's time in an unscripted conversation during board meetings. That's the point of taking it off.
However, I'd just like to note that I can ask for items to be added to the agenda and I will be denied at nearly every venue since November. Just putting that out there. Thank you.
Okay. That's the, that's the, the, the end of the executive committee report, so.
On the agenda for the executive committee, it also says administrative restructuring update and status of hiring of senior staff. We did, were not discussed or?
If you'd like a brief.
Well, that was part of the committee meeting, so I think that that's appropriate here.
Yeah, it's, we did, we did, we did talk about that, so if the superintendent would like to, would you just like?
We discussed the, the timeline of the different position and when they will be interviewing and for phase one, phase two, phase two and screening. That's pertaining to the administrative position and to, it didn't say administrative.
Well, we have, let's say, we have the high school principal.
The high school principal and the middle school principal.
And.
And Nachah.
Okay, so the high school principal, you are, you're conducting interviews at this point?
They already did the first screening. HR already did the first screening. They should be finishing their selection of their, of the first screening.
Middle school principal, where are we?
They're in the, in the screening also. They should be finishing their selection. And those are scheduled for the week of the 16th and the 23rd, those interviews.
Nachah principal?
Close on the 13th.
Okay, so we're still accepting applications.
Till Friday.
Uh, assistants superintendent of schools?
We close on the 16th, however, HR already conducted the first screening with first and first applicants. First batch of applicants.
And the deputy superintendent?
What is the?
Well, we're not, we're not.
We're not getting a deputy superintendent.
We're not. So that's part of the restructuring. When was that going to be brought forward to the whole board?
Well, maybe restructuring is not the correct name, that it does follow what we discussed in the retreat.
Okay.
In the retreat, when you went to the retreat, we discussed the Department of Curriculum and Instruction and what are the things that we would like to see curriculum and instruction. For example, that we don't have a reading person district wide and we should have a reading person district wide. So that's what we're talking about restructuring. That we do not have a reading.
So you're not hiring a deputy superintendent?
We're not hiring a deputy superintendent.
So that hasn't been communicated to the rest of the board though?
Yes, it was communicating to the board in the retreat of January 23rd that we're looking at hiring either an assistant superintendent for operations or, or executive director, but not a deputy superintendent. That was communicated to the board.
Okay, so if a deputy superintendent isn't, then there are two assistant or an assistant and a director position open.
Right.
Okay.
So you're going, as I understand it, what you said last week, the plan is to have an assistant superintendent for operations?
An assistant superintendent for operations or executive director for operations, depends on what the money, what money we get.
Okay, and that has not been advertised yet?
We have, we have targeted, but we have not started the screening. We have not started the interview and that process yet.
Okay, so is there a deadline for the applications?
The 16th, May 16th. But we still, we have, we have received application for those.
Oh, okay. So we have two assistant superintendent positions.
By the way, I do want to.
And three principal positions.
I do want to remind the board that this was all discussed and is in your pocket and your binder of January 23rd, 2016 of the retreat.
Yeah, but not where we are. It's status update.
Yeah, the, the, the agenda said an update and I didn't know what the update was. It wasn't, obviously, something different than what was. The, or the timeline and where we are with the positions.
Can we get an email on that? On the timeline for the, the five positions that are currently open?
Of course, Mrs. Lambert. Today at 3:09, you requested some information.
I did and you got it to me.
At 3:33, I responded to you.
Thank you.
God, just want to make that note.
No, thank you.
Okay.
At 3:09, you requested information and at 3:33, I responded, Chief.
You did, thank you.
Okay, so is that, are we ready to move to policy committee? You have two items on the agenda tonight, but do you have anything else?
Yeah, we have a few items on the agenda today and we're still right now working on other policies that we reviewing and we send them to Chairman. Chairman Goodman to review it because we have to add it because of legislation and we're still working a lot of hard to update all the policies there. We're still getting and the next ones that we're working on is the chronic absentee and DCF policy that we have to add some stuff that, that required by the legislation in this past before years, this, before this legislation, there were some changes they, they put on. So for now, this is where we are right now, right, Dr. Garcia?
Yeah, just to let you know that we did receive from Chairman Goodman, thus this week, we received the resource officer response back. So we'll take it to the next meeting.
Okay, that'd be great.
Again, Mr. Flores, I didn't receive any information regarding that policy.
Which ones?
The one that we're talking about now, that you are reviewing.
No, we're not reviewing. It's put in for the next agenda, but we.
Am I going to get a copy so I can read it?
Soon we do all the agenda, you're going to get a copy of that.
Okay, thank you.
But it was, they're putting, discussing in the meeting, the, for the next session, that those, they was going to put in the agenda and it will be sent to you.
Okay.
Next question. I am wondering if the bullying forms, when this bullying policy is approved, will the bullying forms be available in all the schools? Right now, it's sketchy on which schools have bullying forms and which ones don't. I've heard from a parent. So I'm wondering if there'll be PD provided once we approve the bullying policy before school starts in the fall and the forms will be available in all the buildings.
I'm surprised to hear that because Mrs. Leon Parker have given that information to principals.
I'm very surprised. I did not.
Very surprised to hear that because she, in principle, meaning not individual principal, all principals together, Mrs. Leon Parker provide that information, but I'm pretty sure that she will make sure, she will follow up with that, but she has done that.
Okay, no, it was just something that was communicated to me this afternoon before I came to.
I guess they communicated my information to you.
Thank you. And the other thing is I have policy number 9325 and I couldn't see a first reading anywhere. It's a new policy. It says second reading on our agenda today. And I just noticed that like literally five minutes ago and I don't see that on any previous agenda.
That was the report. Was it the report?
Two months ago, I believe.
Yeah, it was the report.
We skipped a month because of, it needed more editing, but.
So the March meeting?
Was it March or February?
It is not on the March agenda. I have a 9305 public comment at board meetings on issues strong, of strong public interest and an 1120, public participation at meetings on issues of strong public interest.
There may be a typo on the number, but it's, that's the policy.
Okay. It's the same policy?
If there's a typo on the number on one of those minutes.
And then should we have the addendum as a first reading tonight? It says second reading.
That's an, that's an addendum. It's not, it's not a policy.
So you don't have to have two readings of an addendum to a policy?
Evidently not.
Okay. I will take your turn, thank you.
We talked about that, but, but we'll, we'll discuss the, the issue.
No, I, if you've researched it to make sure, I want to make sure that we don't do one reading and then get in trouble for only having had one reading.
I did ask that and I'm told that we don't need to do that, but. but I did bring it up, same question you had.
May I be, regarding, just one more question?
Sure.
Before, we had a discussion about this time last year, maybe a little earlier last year, about credits for graduation, and we as a board decided to change credits for graduation. But I've not been able to find anywhere in our policies what the move towards the increased credits for graduation. The state said by 20 or 2021 that we will have to have 25 credits, and I think the discussion amongst moving that last year was to gradually increase those numbers so our students will get there. We have in our geographical area, the lowest number of credits of any school district. We're the only one that is still at 21, and so I'm wondering if that can be taken up at the next policy committee meeting, or if that is something that has to come from central office and move forward.
So, we did act, you recall us, that we acted on that last spring?
Yes.
So, I remember discussing it, I don't remember, but we'll have to review the minutes to see if somebody's overlooked something.
The board did put that in place, however, the state have changed the date to starting with the class of 2021.
Right.
So, the board did put it in place when it's starting with the class of 2019, but since it changed to 2021, and Neil, it's 2021 now? 2021, it's no, it doesn't make any sense to start it, because we don't know what the... Let me finish, because we don't know what courses the state is going to add or delete. So, we have to make sure that we make sure that we have the appropriate courses that the state is going to add or delete. So, that's on an agenda to discuss during the retreat or at the end of this school year.
Okay, just for reference, we are at 21, the next closest districts to us are Norwich Free Academy and E.O. Smith at 23, Parish Hill is at 24, and they go up from there all the way to, Wyndham Tech has 29, because they include their technical classes in that too. So, we are the lowest in our geographical area of credits.
If I recall that discussion correctly, we were over mine to move a little faster than the state in terms of requiring more credits. Now, the specific courses was an issue.
Okay, so, there is an issue, we are 21, majority of students take 24 credits. So, we have students that graduate, what the board gave, what the college certificate of distinction, with 24 credits. The state required 21, we wanted 24, and so kids that obtain 24 get a certificate of distinction. But one other reason that went to, we waited, put pause on it, is because it went to 2021, so you have to wait and see what is coming down the pipe before I make a decision.
Well, my concern is that I'm giving basically a year, next year's, this year's seventh graders, next year's eighth graders will be the class of 2021. And so, before we get to the point of enrolling them in classes for next spring, for the following fall, Andrew enrolled at Barrows, I'm sure the middle school students did as well, we need to be prepared for how many credits they have to have. We need a program of studies that's prepared for at least 24, 25. And I know you're aware of this, I'm just making the rest of the board aware of it. I want to make sure that we move in that direction.
I'm surprised you're making those questions, because when we're getting ready for 2019, we brought it to you with the courses and with the program of study. So, when we're ready for the 2021, the board will definitely have it.
That's a year from right now, I just want to make sure we're prepared, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we're ready to move to action items. Okay, so, I'll entertain a motion to approve the change to substitute teachers' rate of pay, that's in reference to?
So moved.
Building substitute.
Well, the...
Second.
Okay. So, Mr. Collegian moved, and Mr. Montalvo seconded. So, that's reference two, and what's the discussion, what are your thoughts?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay. If there are no other questions, are we ready to vote? All in favor? All, that's unanimous, thank you. Next item is the IDEA grant. I'll entertain a motion to approve the IDEA grant.
So moved.
Second.
The superintendent's handing out a grant somewhere even as I speak.
So, the grant that you have in your pocket has been revised. When your packet was given to you last Friday, we used the numbers that we had from last year. However, this week, the Department of Special Education received the new numbers, and there is a decrease of, I believe, 1,119 in those, so we had to amend the grant. So, again, when we did it on Friday, your packet had the numbers that we received last year, and Monday, Monday, Leon, Monday Tuesday?
Yeah, Monday.
Monday, we received the new numbers, and those numbers reflect a decrease of 1,190, so you have the revised grant in front of you.
Wait a minute, what is the total we're requesting? Because you've got two different numbers on this piece of paper you just handed me.
Question.
Okay.
The one that I don't see, you have the correct number, with the decrease.
Eight hundred ninety-seven, okay, because up at the top, it's what I requested.
Eight ninety-seven, six eighty-six, plus the thirty-six thousand one hundred and forty-two.
Yeah, but that's the correct...
Equals the nine hundred and thirty-three, eight twenty-eight.
Plus the...
One's the pre-K.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, so there's...
And the pre-K is twelve.
Oh, I see, so it's the pre-K plus the pre...
Right.
Okay, plus the K is twelve, all right.
So, there is a decrease of 1,190.
So, the total not requested is nine hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight.
Right.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments? Are we ready to vote on this? All in favor? Mr. Goodman? Did you vote? Yeah, okay, unanimous, all right. Excuse me here, I'll get my iPad to behave. All right, so the next item on the agenda, school attendance program grant application.
This is a new grant.
Let me get a motion first.
I so moved.
Second.
Okay.
This is a new grant for the school district, it was just Mr. Bill Chapin and the team that work on this grant. We want to attack the issue of chronic absenteeism, reduce chronic absenteeism in the district, so we are applying for this grant. We have not received this grant in the past, it's the first time we're applying for it.
Okay, and the total amount is?
Not that much, you can see, 25,000.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, recommend approval to submit the Alliance and Priority School District Consolidated Grant Application.
Definitely, this is one that we have to submit on a yearly basis, as we talked, the Alliance Grant and the School Priority Grant, the numbers that we have are the last numbers that we received. We know today that those numbers may decrease, but we have to submit the application with the official number that they gave us.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All right, this one's a lot of money, Bud.
Yeah. It doesn't mean that we won't...
Well, we're certainly going to submit the application here, I need the money. So, all in favor? Thank you. All right, now we settle down to some serious work. Recommend, or entertain a motion to approve the second reading of the Conduct of Board Business Meeting Conduct Public Policy Section. I think 9325 is the correct number.
It's 9325.
That's the correct number, I believe. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Actually, this came from the policy committee, so, the presumption is that there are two members on the policy committee, so that should be a motion already.
Yeah.
So, this, as I recall, when we discussed this in the policy committee, there was a proposal to have a limit on the total amount of time for a public comment, that's not in the draft. Did you want, did you want there to be a total amount of time in the draft?
They put a total amount of time...
There's three minutes before and two minutes, two minutes after, but there's no total for altogether.
Well, there's three minutes only in the beginning, and...
Yes, but suppose there's 30 people? That'd be 90 minutes. We're not, you know, that's the thing, do we want to, do we want to limit the total amount of time that we spend on public comment, that's the question.
Yes, I would say yes, because we have to conduct the business at the board.
Mr. Montalvo was there, and you were there, and I was there.
And I was there.
And there was a discussion about whether that should be 20 minutes or 30 minutes, right?
No, the, well, we agree at that time was that no more than five minutes total for the two comments.
That's for, that's for an individual, I'm talking about the aggregate amount of time that, I mean, tonight, we had six people sign up, you know, that's 18 minutes, that's not, that's not, but, there have been evenings when, especially when a number of people want to comment on exactly the same subject.
But we didn't talk about the limit of people that should come and talk.
No, we did.
Yeah, but we talked, but we don't come out with the consensus that say, all right, 20 people, 15 people, 10 people. We never got to that number, that I recall. I don't know, Mr. Florida, you recall that? Do you have any number?
Well, we discussed it, but we never came out to a number.
Exactly.
At the end. But I, we need to eliminate, to conduct the business, I believe the three minutes in the beginning would be fine, I'm still saying not, three minutes in the end.
Okay.
But I think the three minutes...
What do we call the end? The end of what?
The business spending.
Before the executive...
If you, yeah, before executive sessions, if you recall, Mr. Quanley, I think, brought it up originally, and then Mr. Montalvo joined him and asked me that there be, that there be commentary at the end of our meetings.
Yeah, yeah. We agree that at the beginning for public comments will be for three minutes, okay? And the public can talk about whatever topics they want, but the second, oh, yes, but the second two minutes, it has to be based on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's what we agree at that time, because we had to give the opportunity to the public to express themselves, to talk about whatever they want to say, okay?
The policy actually says that it's limited to topics that are...
On the agenda.
No, it's, it's, it's under the board's jurisdiction, doesn't have to be on the agenda.
But that was in the second public comment, that has...
No, the first, the first one says, that's not a change, that was there before, it's still there. It says that public comment should be on matters that are within the board's jurisdiction.
It's in line seven.
So, the public comment doesn't have to be an item on the agenda, but it does have to refer to something that the board can do something about, or should be doing something about. So, for example, we, at one time, we had public, we spent considerable amount of time, in fact, on public comment about whether a specific teacher should be assigned to the high school or the middle school. That's not actually a topic that the board, in the board's jurisdiction, that's the superintendent and the principals of the schools' authority. You know, we have some responsibility to make sure that the curriculum in schools meets the requirements of the state, but the, you know, the individual, the assignment of individual teachers is, that's responsibility to the superintendent, so it's not really appropriate for comments of the board.
Yeah.
Okay, so, there are, there are topics that people sometimes want to discuss that are really out of order.
Yeah, yeah, but according with my minute that I took, or my information that I took, I copied down, that said five minutes total, okay? At the first, the first public comment, it's for three minutes, okay? I will clear that, okay? In those three minutes, the public can voice their opinion about whatever they want to say, it has nothing to do with the agenda.
Yeah, it does not have to be on the agenda.
Exactly.
But it does have to be within the jurisdiction of the board.
Well, it has to be school-related.
Has to be within the jurisdiction of the board. There are things that are school-related that are not, there are things that are school-related that are not within the jurisdiction of the board, and we need to be that clear. We're not, the board does not, for example, get involved in the individual assignment of teachers, that's a clear example.
But that was not the way that was written at that day. I'm talking about the policy that we just reviewed.
That is the policy that you just reviewed.
Because I was there.
Yeah, and that's, and that language, and that language is in there and was in there.
Yeah.
We didn't change that language, it's, that's the language, it's the existing language.
But my point is, I don't look into restricting the people for talking. I don't want to put a limit on the people for talking. If they have something to say, we are public servant.
So...
So, we have to hear them.
Okay, so, would you like to amend, would you like to amend the policy?
I would love to, yes.
You have to put in the form of a motion.
I present a motion that allow the people for the first comment to talk about any topic they want to talk.
I will second that motion.
Okay.
I have comments.
You know, any topic, it is kind of too broad, you know, I mean, we have to deliver it, I follow you, and I, it's fine, but we really cannot have any topic. We can have somehow school topic, business, jurisdiction is probably too broad for people to understand, so maybe we can have another term, to school business or something else, but not any topic.
No, well...
Mr. Montalvo. Yes, school-related, something like that.
Mrs. Lambert?
Mr. Collegian, you were looking to speak before me, if you'd like to, go ahead.
No, thank you. Mr. Montalvo, while I do not disagree with the idea that we must engender a conversation in a global way with the public, certainly, but as I've been a member of the board and I've watched the progression of the process, there are many times when the process here, because it's open-ended, is a topic that is the responsibility and jurisdiction of a principal and his administration comes to the board, goes to the superintendent, then goes to a principal, that's backwards, and it's not fair, or is it appropriate? We hire administrators to field those questions from those concerned parents and members of the community, and that's what they should be doing. So, in the flow of, the flow of information, the flow of responsibility, we certainly should be hearing from them during this open meeting, but just like that principal should be given the opportunity to do their job and to respond appropriately at the right level, so should the Board of Education. Our job as policymakers and arbitrators is more global, so that our time is not spent directing things that should start at the schools. If it starts at the school, if it's a concern at that level, and they're given the opportunity to deal with it, then it never comes to us. If they can't resolve it, it may go to the superintendent of schools and the district office, and then eventually come to us if it has to be dealt with in policy process. But it takes a massive amount of time to redirect, so I think our responsibility in this area is to, is the education piece, to help the public understand, to help parents understand, to help staff understand about all of the opportunities to appropriately communicate the issue, to start at the lowest level, take those issues with the new school. If it can't be addressed there, it runs up to us. It shouldn't come from us and run down to them. They're getting things, they're getting things from the wrong direction. So, I do agree with you that the public absolutely has to have an opportunity to have the problems that they've recognized resolved, but they must be recognized and resolved at the appropriate level in the appropriate way. I agree with you, but we don't do everything, and we're not supposed to.
No.
So, helping our staff and our parents get their concerns answered quickly, appropriately, where they need to be answered, is the forum that they should be using. It shouldn't be coming to us if it belongs in the school, it should come to us after it's been dealt with. That's my point.
Mrs. Lambert?
Thank you. I feel like there's a sudden rush of censorship here, and I'm not sure where it's coming from. People sometimes show up, they bother to take the time out of their evenings with their children's practices and the other activities that go on, you all know it's sometimes hard for me to make it to a meeting because of what's going on in my personal life, and they come to this meeting maybe because they haven't been able to find direction within their building, they have a problem. I don't think that every personal student, and I would certainly say to someone if they started talking about their student in a very personal way, or a specific employee, that that's not appropriate, and I think that would be appropriate for the chair to shut someone down in that case. But if 30 people have a concern, and it never comes to the Board of Education, how can we remedy that concern?
If it's...
I think, no, I'm sorry, I have the floor right now. I think, no, I'm sorry, I have the floor right now.
You do, Mrs. Lambert, thank you for-
I think I'll let you take this off.
You gave me the lead to me.
Um, I gave everybody their opportunity to speak, it was plain. When people feel supported, they're going to support the Board of Education. When they feel like they're supported in their buildings, when they feel like their children are getting the services that they need, they're going to be much more likely to come to us with the good and the bad. They're going to be much more likely to support our budgets, our building referendums, and any other subject that comes before them, that we need to go to a vote to get opinion, to fill out surveys, whatever it is, to, to get those things done. And I feel like limiting what people can speak to, I understand limiting time, I understand that we only have so much time in our evening. I came here from work tonight, you all did as well, not you, Dr. Soul, but you all did as well. And, you know, we get tired at 10 o'clock at night, and I am totally, totally conscious of that. But the opportunity for the people who pay the taxes, that run our schools, that support our students, the parents that we want to get out to support us in activities and things that we do, if they don't feel like they have a voice here, they're not going to bother. And I think we've seen that over the past few years, as things have kind of become more and more difficult for them to have the opportunity to say their piece. And I think that limiting the topics of the conversation, at least in the first speech, first opportunity to speak, would be a disservice to the board. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other, any other?
Was the motion to second?
Yeah, I know. It's, you have, okay, so we're voting on the amendment to remove the, the requirement that comments be limited to subjects that are within the jurisdiction of the board. Okay? All in favor? Opposed?
In this form? The any topic, the any is the order? No discussion?
Yeah. Well, the any topic would require removing the, the statement that says that, that the appropriate topics are within the jurisdiction of the board.
Okay, I was reading, what was it we're voting on right now?
We're voting on, on Mr. Montalvo's proposed amendment.
To discuss any topic?
Yes. Which, which, which essentially would delete the, the statement that, that the comments are limited to within jurisdiction.
Jurisdiction, okay.
So, Mr. Montalvo and Mrs. Lambert have voted in favor. Mr. Collagen and, um, Mr. Flores Alvarez have voted. And so, which way are you voting?
I'm voting for jurisdiction, to remain within the jurisdiction.
Okay. So you're voting against the-
Voting against any topic. The any, the any is the word I'm projecting to.
This is going to be my last meeting. This is going to be my last meeting.
No. That might be for, arrange them for me to vote for it, then.
All right. So now we're back to the, to the policy itself, which, which, which permits for three minutes of discussion at the beginning of the meeting, after the pledge of allegiance and student recognitions, and two minutes at the conclusion of meetings before executive sessions on topics directly related to the agenda items. Any more discussion? If we're ready to vote? All, all in favor? Opposed?
Hey, abstain.
And, okay, so, I have three in favor, Mrs. Lambert voted opposed, and Mr. Montalvo abstained. So the motion carries. Okay?
It's a quorum of the Board of Ed that's currently present.
When I chair, by the way, when I chair, I don't vote unless my vote would affect the outcome. That way, if there's a question that comes up later, I can, I can effectively represent either side.
No, I just simply explained that the three is the majority of the board in attendance tonight.
Yes, that's right. That's what it takes to-
Right.
To pass a motion.
Can I go back to something? Can you kind of clarify for the public what jurisdiction of the board is? Because they, they may feel like they cannot talk, I mean, we're talking about school-related issues, right?
Pretty much. I mean, we've, we've interpreted that fairly broadly. I, but what, 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 as I said, some topics such as assignments of teachers, or, I mean, it's a board policy, for example, how far a student should have to walk to catch a school bus, or whether or not they should have to walk to, to cross a particular type of road. But it is not a board, within the board jurisdiction, to discuss whether the location of a school bus pickup point should be on the right side or the left side of a particular street. Okay? We have a transportation coordinator within the district office to deal with questions about where the school bus stops are, and, and, and issues related to the bus schedules. The board doesn't do bus schedules. The board has a policy that, that provides guidance into how bus, bus schedules are done. It's perfectly acceptable if a parent finds that, that they can't get an answer out of the transportation department, or they can't get an answer out of a school superintendent, a school building principal, they come to the board and say, "I'm frustrated because I can't get an answer." Okay? So we can get, be informed when the process that Mr. Collagen described is not working. But the process ought to work. And it's also reasonable, you know, you probably have noticed that people in town do, our email addresses are on the website, and, and we can get questions from people about, "How do I get an answer to this question?" And sometimes some of the questions that we get asked by members of the public are far away, far from appropriate board business, but what that person really needs is to be directed to the right place within the school system to deal with the problem, which is what we usually try and do.
Okay, so, anyway, what I wanted to clarify with this is that I kind of object, or I'm going to object to the term that Mrs. Lambert used about censorship. I don't think the board is censoring anybody. Okay? So jurisdiction is a, do we laugh, Mrs. Lambert? It's a serious business.
No, I'm not laughing.
So I don't laugh when you speak, I don't laugh.
I smiled at you, I understand your, sir.
Okay? So censorship is a very, very drastic term. Okay? We're just-
Let's, let's not get into a discussion-
I just wanted to clarify that, because it's on the record, and that's not what is happening.
Okay. I, your objection is noted. Okay. Now, we have, we have a companion policy that goes with this, and this is policy 1120, that, that talks about a particular kind of public meeting that, that has not been held, in fact, in the, in the time that I've been on the board, but is nonetheless a, a possibility. I think that's, that's essentially, it's a sort of public hearing, is, is what's being described there, where there's a back and forth between the public comments and the board acts, and then the public comments, and then the board acts. I guess, I guess the, the, the one, the only one, I guess, that, that might have qualified was before I was elected to the board, there was a hearing on whether or not the cafeteria service should be turned over to a private contractor. I remember attending that meeting, and there were, there were comments from the public, and then the-
It was Q and A? It was question and answer? Kind of format?
Yeah, it was. It was. The, the board announced that they had to reach a decision, and they allowed back and forth with the public. And then they decided to, not to, not to outsource the cafeteria, at, at least at that time. But that's the only time that I can recall when policy 1120 might have applied. At any rate, is there any discussion, comments, questions about that policy?
Are we talking F?
F.
Yeah, it's F. It's, it's reference seven, which is-
Reference seven, yes.
It would seem, it would seem that when, when that sort of participation of the public in making a decision is necessary, why limit ourselves by not supporting that idea?
Actually, the way, the way this is described now, if you look at, at reference seven, we're effectively deleting the policy.
We're deleting the whole policy, yeah. That's, that's exactly what it says. And that's what the, the agenda said, too, is to delete the policy.
Okay. So, so, as I said, I, I, the way that, that policy was written originally, I found confusing. I don't know that it's ever actually been used. The, like I said, the, the meeting with regard to the cafeteria workers is that, the cafeteria is the closest thing I can remember, and that was before I was a member of the board, so I don't remember exactly what policy we're operating under. But it doesn't seem we need a policy. So, anyway, I, I, that too comes from the policy committee, so it's a, it's a motion. Is there any discussion?
No, I'm just-
Ready to vote on this?
I don't understand.
All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Now, where are we? Okay. E, F, G. This is 511711?
Yeah. And that should not say policy, that's an addendum.
That's, this is an addendum to the policy. What, what this is, this is actually a consequence of the request that was made by Mrs. Bay regarding, all right, so, so the problem here is, what we passed on December, I don't remember whether it was the ninth or the eleventh, was it the ninth?
Ninth.
Okay. So we made an adjustment to the lottery policy on December 9th, which, by the way, the state has approved if they, I don't know whether, if they haven't updated the operating policy online, they should have, but-
Yeah. Can't find it.
But, yeah, I know, bureaucracy is sometimes slow. We'll, we'll see if we can push them on that. They did approve it. But what we did is, is, is the original policy applied only to staff teaching at, or staff at Barrows. We expanded the policy to district-wide staff. Okay? And there are two possible, there are two choice lotteries. There's the lottery for the Magna School and the lottery for the Camp and Heroes program. And on December 9th, the, the policy essentially was passed, it says that if a staff member exercises a preference, they get to choose one or the other, and once they've chosen one, that's it. Okay? And what Mrs. Bay is saying is that, is that that was not the policy that was in place when she chose to put her child into the Camp and Heroes preschool program. So she put the child in the Camp and Heroes preschool program with the idea that she would have the option subsequently to put the child in, to put her child into the Barrows school. All right? The question that we dealt with in the policy committee and the executive committee with regard to this, when we brought, when we looked at it, was we essentially have a possibility of as many as four seats in each grade, for Wyndham students, and two seats in each grade for sending district students, for staff members. So a teacher who teaches in, in Wyndham, with the, whatever school they teach in, there are four slots for each grade, but only four. So I believe it's, if I remember, it's the second grade for which we have six applications already for those four positions?
Second grade.
So-
Third grade.
Third grade. For which, so, so, so six Wyndham teachers have, have asked for a preference for the Barrows Academy in the third grade. There are only four seats available. In fact, there may be fewer than four seats, because one of them may have been taken previously, you know? At, at any rate, four seats, six teachers, there's going to have to be a lottery among those six for the four seats. The two students that don't get in that lottery still have the option of, of entering the regular lottery, if there's an opening in the, in the third grade. In the case of, okay, so, so we have some of the, some, in some instances, all of the seats for a grade have been requested by staff, in some cases more than all of the seats. And in other cases, there are, there are spaces available. So what we said is that if you have, if you're a staff member and you had already made a choice before December 9th, we'll, in spite of the policy that says you only get one choice, we'll, we'll give you a second opportunity, one time only this year, because, you know, for anyone who has previously made a choice, and has gotten caught by the fact that we changed the rules on December 9th, we'll give them an opportunity, if there is a space, if there's still an opening available. All right? So in the case of kindergarten, we already have four applicants for whom it would be their first choice. So there's no more space left. In the case of first grade, I think we've got a couple of spaces open.
We have a couple of spaces. Some schools, some, some grade levels are closed, some are not.
Some are, some are closing, some are not. So if, if someone has their child enrolled in Camp and Heroes, in fact, we have, we do have some instances where teachers who are not teaching at Barrows have a child enrolled in, in Camp and Heroes, who enrolled in Camp and Heroes because Barrows was not an option when they did it, now all of a sudden Barrows is an option. And, and so they have a chance, you know, if they have a first grader and there are spaces available to do that. But we have a deadline date on this of, of May 11th, which is today. I believe all the teachers, all the staff members who are eligible to make a switch-
Were notified?
Have been notified.
Thanks, thank you.
But if the board would like to extend the date, the whole point of this is, is that because people are going to be claiming spaces that are available, there will not need to be a lottery for those spaces. So, so we can go ahead and hold the lottery as scheduled, and, and, and allowing people to, to make a second choice.
The lottery was already held, wasn't it?
Yes.
The lottery was already held.
Lottery, yes, I know. So we were looking at this, and we said, okay, so, since the lottery's already held and the spaces have already been given away by lottery, if, if they're, all right, we didn't want to try and interfere with the lottery.
Right.
So the effect of this policy is that it doesn't involve any seat that might have been available in a lottery. All right.
Mrs. Bay brought up a question, that what happened after May 13th. I think you want to explain maybe that this is those, after next year, this doesn't have any merit, because people will apply and try.
Yeah, well, as, after this year, people have to act on their, they have one choice, and that's it.
Right.
Okay? So this is a one-time chance, you know, for example, for someone who had had their child enrolled in Camp and Heroes because Barrows wasn't an option, now Barrows is an option. But anyway, so, so now hopefully everyone has made the choices that they have to make. This does not, I don't think, preclude anyone from enrolling in the, in the regular lotteries.
No, no.
So if, if a staff member has a child in Camp and Heroes next year, and, and says, "I want to get into Barrows," and there's some, a seat or two available in the child's grade, and there's going to be a lottery, they can, they can sign up for it, just like anyone else can. Okay. Have I made a complicated problem clear, or just added to the confusion?
I think we all had it.
Well, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
If I remember back, and I'm an elderly guy now, officially, that the policy committee met a number of times on the issue of, of the lottery, the lottery, the policy-
Before December?
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
And that, that there were staff there, if I remember?
Yes.
Yes.
And we spent many hours-
But the staff, as I recall, the staff that were there were staff who did not have their children enrolled in a program of choice.
Thank you. And you're older than I am.
So it wasn't somebody who had their child in Camp and Heroes-
Right.
-that said, "Can I move to Barrows now?" It was someone who did not have their child in, yeah. But who said, "Aha, you know, if you do this, may I enroll my child in, in, in Barrows." They made a pretty good argument about why it should be possible to do that, even though that particular staff member was not on staff at Barrows.
Mm-hmm. So there's a, a number of meetings and a number of hours spent trying to satisfy equity, a difficult thing to do, especially with the complexities of the number of students and their family situations. And this amendment, addendum, is an attempt to deal with that.
It's actually an attempt to deal with what you would call a grandfather clause, you know? You know, what to do with people who got caught out by the, by the change.
Thank you. That's clear.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Let's see. I got three. Opposed? Okay. So we have three in favor and two opposed? So it passes. Next item is, entertain a motion to approve personnel recommendations.
Oh, just to have the revision to policy. Oh, just to have the revision to policy, that there's a revision.
To what?
To the Policy 5117.
Reconsidered.
No, we just passed that.
That was the lottery policy.
The lottery, the lottery policy is what we were passed doing.
Yeah, 511711.
And then it's personnel recommendations.
Okay.
H.
So I think we're at H. So is Reference, is Reference 9 up to date now?
Yes.
Okay, so, I'll entertain a motion to approve the personnel recommendations in specified in Reference 9.
So moved.
Packet.
Said.
Okay. Any discussion?
Has it changed since the version that we were emailed?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Well, Dr. Sewell asked if it was up to date. I just wanted to make sure that I didn't miss another...
I'm talking about the Reference 9 that's in the packet.
The one that's in the back, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that there aren't any, so sometimes we get an addendum...
Yeah. I want to make sure that I didn't miss an addendum. You said it was coming up to date now, I was like, ah...
We do. That was why I asked. I wanted to make sure we weren't missing something.
Thank you.
Regarding with personnel, I, two meetings ago, I asked to get a list of reasons why, based on the exit interview, why so many teachers or administrators are leaving.
If I remember you asked specifically about the 11 that were named, was it 11?
No, actually, actually...
It was broader? It was broader? Okay. I thought it was just those 11.
All the time that you resign or you get...
Yeah, I understand, but I believe that we're planning to get to that on a workshop meeting.
So we, so, we have people, we're still hiring, we're still interviewing, we're hiring, we're resigning. This is something that is better off in your June workshop meeting. So the Department of HR is aware of that, they're working on that, they're working on teacher turnover, but we don't want to give you piece here and piece here. We want, we want to give the information to the Board, a comprehensive report, not only of one year, but other years, so the Department of HR is working diligently on that.
But I don't care much about the hiding. I care the one that they're leaving and why, so we can collectively work on it and come up with a solution.
I think I, I asked, as a, as a piggyback of your request, for history...
Yes.
And to look at the national trends, the state trends, the trends in our own district, and the surrounding towns. So I asked for an expansion of your request, so that we would in fact have a broad look at all of that.
Yeah, but my request was only for Wyndham, so, you know, I don't care much what happened in Hartford, or what happened in Washington, it's Wyndham. That's my concern, because I'm here because of them.
Okay, but so, what the superintendent is saying, we're planning to have that as a topic for a workshop meeting in June. I don't know how compatible our exit interviews are with those of surrounding towns, but whatever information we can get more broadly, we will. But, but the workshop meeting for June will cover, you know, in the whole workshop or part of the workshop, specifically on the turnover, exit interview information.
But don't you think it's more prudent to know the reason, and then when you go to the workshop, then you can work on it, rather than go to the workshop?
Wait a minute. I would, well, all right. Actually, I think I agree with you on that. I would like to, to, to see the slides, the slides that are going to be presented as part of the packet for a workshop, rather than having them show up on the screen the night of the workshop. You know, so I'd like to encourage the staff to have their preparation for workshop topics done four or five days before the meeting, so that they can be included in the, in the packet that's sent to the Board, because you're right, if you have a chance to review the date ahead of time, you'll, you'll be in a better position to think about.
Yes, exactly. If you can study it, then you can be proactive, rather than...
However, we always give you the workshop materials the Friday before the workshop. You always...
No, no, no. We get slide shows all the time that we didn't get ahead of time.
Okay, so we make sure that the PowerPoint is in there. But two, two members of the staff are assigned that, that assignment, and they're working very diligently, but keep in mind that they're doing other things. So we have given them till June to get those, and those two members of the staff are know will have it done by June.
Oh, okay, because I was never notified. I was never told anything of that kind, I was, you know, working on it or whatever. So I'm outside the left field.
On a regular basis, I think we need to follow the protocol that the Board Chair put in place. We, one Board member wants this, the other Board member wants this, the other Board member wants that. So we're trying to make sure that we can take topics for the workshop. There's a topic on student achievement, or students, how the students, the students from the ECO program did. We want to make that a workshop topic, and we can look at APS, AT, all the data that you want. I think it's make, make sure that the Board is working more smoothly, when we can have a topic for a workshop. And so, there's a protocol on how to request these things. We do have yours in mind, we already start working in it, two staff members are assigned to it, but this is not something that can be done overnight.
I understand that.
Overnight. So we said for June, this would be a workshop topic for the Board.
Okay, so this is a case where it actually makes sense to pose the question to the superintendent in an email, rather than verbally in a board meeting, because if you have an email, then you get some sort of response to the email, and if you don't get a response to the email, you can send the email again and say, "Hey, I haven't gotten a response to this email." And, and so you can ask the question, and at some point, you should get the answer back, that we're planning to put it as a workshop topic in June.
Yeah, but, but the problem with that was that I didn't think about that at home, where I was home. I thought about it when I was here during the meeting.
Well, write a note to yourself and send an email after the meeting.
Oh, that's why, that's why board comment was eliminated, right? So we don't...
Because we don't, because we don't need to be doing it.
We can restrain our voice also. I'm not happy about that, because I...
All right, so, so you brought up something at a meeting, and it, and at least, from your point of view, it fell between the cracks, because you didn't get an answer to it until tonight.
Yeah.
Whereas you could have had an answer at the time you brought it up, if you'd sent the superintendent an email.
Because somebody didn't like my comment, now board comments have to suffer, because it was strict. Now we don't have board comments. Now we want to comment, we have to go out there as a citizen, not as a board member.
My point is, is that you have ways of communicating with the superintendent and the Board Chair.
No, I understand that. Why restrict the voice of the people that they're here? Because we're here to take...
Because, because it's 9:00 at night already, and we don't need to spend a lot of time on unscripted conversation.
Yeah.
In fact, so far, we're ahead of things. We got one more action item that we added to the agenda, and that is...
Did we actually approve the personnel recommendations? I don't think we've done that.
Oh, that's what we haven't voted on. Okay, which is the topic that, all right. So, are we ready for the discussion on the personnel? Thank you.
Do we have a motion in a second?
Motion.
Did we have a motion in a second, Ms. Testa? I'm sorry, you'd be the best barometer of...
No, I, I motion.
Second.
Okay. So, Mr. Flores Alvarez moved, and Mr. Collegian seconded. Any further comment? All in favor? Thank you. All right. All right, so, we added the, a motion to the, to the agenda from the Audit and Finance to approve 42 relatively small transfers on behalf of the budget transfers requested by our Director of Finance. Has everyone gotten a copy? These are all fairly small, routine things. Are there any discussion? If not, are we ready to vote? Actually, this is most, yeah, all gets from the Finance and Audit Committee, so...
It came out of committee, so we shouldn't need a first and a second, I think, you're ready to vote.
Yeah, it's effectively been moved and seconded by the committee. So, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
In favor or?
The transfers.
The recommended budget transfers.
Okay.
And that's unanimous, I believe. You mentioned to me earlier that we do not need an executive session?
I don't have any idea for executive session.
Okay. So we can delete the proposed executive sessions for the evening, and we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Sorry, the motion didn't pass yet, so they...